Good afternoon. Let me get out my script. My name is Max Parker. I'm president of the Board of Trustees for San Angelo Independent School Districts. So I'd like to welcome you to our meeting tonight. Before I go through our script, I think I'll ask Braxton Gilbert, Associate Pastor at Life Point Baptist Church, to come and deliver our invocation.
You will pray with me. Almighty God, you are sovereign over all of creation and all knowledge and wisdom is found in you and comes from you. We thank you for the gift of children and the joy they bring to our community, and we acknowledge the responsibility that you have given us to care for them. We thank you for parents as they love and lead their children, and we thank you for teachers, custodial staff, cafeteria workers, school board members, administrators, all those who give their time and energy to the investment of the children of our community. We ask this evening that you would give the leaders wisdom and discernment to protect, educate, and guide the children of our community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor Gilbert. Let me lead. We don't have any elementary schools, students, because school is out right now, that usually lead us in our pledges, but I'll lead us in our pledges to the United States flag and Texas flag. But everybody, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Now I'll go through our script for our record. As president of the Board of Trustees for the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. Also welcome those of you who are watching the tape of this meeting on our public access channel, channel four. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our board meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times a month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda board meeting workshop last Monday. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent and other administrators, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to five minutes or less. Anyone speaking on an item not on our agenda, please be aware that we cannot reply except to thank you for your comments. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking time to join us this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our district. All right, with that said, I will now turn it over to Whitney Wood and Molly Turk in our communications department here for our district for some recognitions.
Mr. Parker, Dr. Detloff, and distinguished members of the board, we begin tonight's recognitions by celebrating one of the ways our students are smart with a spotlight on our outstanding Central High School Speech and Debate Team. This incredible group truly showcases how at SAISD we are cultivating the important skills identified in our learner profile of communication, critical thinking, collaboration, and creation. These talented students just wrapped up an amazing year, including competing in Nationals for the National Speech and Debate Association. As part of the recognition, you will hear from our SAISD difference speaker, Mr. Kobe Evers, who we thank for his commitment, there he is, dedication and inspiring work. You will also get a special front row performance by one of our students, and for this very performance that you will see here tonight, she earned 6A State Runner-Up for UIL Speech and Debate and was seventh in the entire nation with NSDA. So pretty incredible. So at this time, I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Evers to tell you more.
I need a step stool or something over here. Thank you, Whitney. Like she said, my name's Kobe Evers. Thank you for having us out tonight. I love what I do because what speech and debate is and what I say in my classroom is that their voices get to be heard and amplified, and I get to do that every day. So really quickly, I just kind of want to go through our season, and it was a really incredible season. What you're seeing right here are a lot of my amazing students. This year, we had over, I had over 80 on my roster, so this is just some of them, and next year, I already have over 130 students that are going to be on the team. So this team is continuing to grow and continuing to be one of the bigger and better teams, not only in the state but in the nation, as you're about to see. So right here, this picture is our officers, the nine officers from this year, and they do a lot of work, and I thought that was a good picture to show, but you can go. All right, so we, I'll try to be quick, but we perform and compete mostly every weekend. We, we travel all around the state, and there's different things that we travel in, but throughout the year, there's TFA, which is the Texas Forensics Association, and these are all the tournaments that we compete in. And we had over 14 regular season championships at these tournaments, and you have to qualify for state in each event to get to the state tournament. And our program this year had the most qualifiers in the entire state of Texas out of almost 300 schools, and that included 70 entries and 34 students. And we actually had a record breaker, Belle Royer, qualify for state in nine events this year, which has never been done, and she's a sophomore. Give it up for her, that was awesome. But we travel and we compete and we stay the night, and it's a lot of fun, and what you're seeing them wear is what they wear when they compete, suits. They're very professional. We have a lot of fun, but we are serious and we're down to business, as you can see, and we're ready to rock and roll. So the state tournament, once we got there, we had some great results as well. We had a whole bunch of quarterfinal breaks, over 20, over 15 semifinal breaks, which is really hard to do. This team makes it look easily, and we had, easy, and we had five finalist entries, which is awesome. And here are the results right here. Aneah's not here, but she got sixth place in impromptu, and she also got seventh speaker overall in LD, which is awesome to do. And then we had two duet finalists. We had Jack McLaughlin and Britten Hebert get fifth place, and then Catherine Simpleton and Connor Greenfield get sixth place, and they're here. We'll recognize them at the end. And then Auburn Jamison got third place in humorous. Jack McLaughlin got state runner-up in dramatic, and he final in two events, which allowed him to be the fifth top individual competitor in the entire state, which was really awesome. I can go on and on about more people and more results we had, but it was really incredible. And here are some pictures of us that, that weekend, that tournament. We went to Gregory Portland High School near the beach and competed, and it was, it was really awesome. Like I said, these are the best of the best. You have to get at least 10 points to qualify in each event to get to the state tournament, and to get certain amount of points, you have to place in those tournaments. So these are the results we did, and we did an awesome job, and we also got third place overall sweepstakes out of the entire state of Texas, which is absolutely incredible collectively as a team, and we're going to keep getting better and better. So UIL is another thing we compete in. There's a lot of different events we do in UIL. Here tonight, we had two qualifying CX teams for state, Annabell Dusick and Gracie Barker, and then also Katie York and Sammy Millward of an APA state tournament. Sammy Millward got fourth best speaker in the entire state in CX, and then the UIL...
I mention this to our administrators when they're talking to us. Tell us what the acronyms mean. What is CX and so forth?
Sure. CX is policy debate, so it's just like two-on-two debate, and it's a cross debate, so it's a partner debate, and it's more about policy, and that's what CX is. And then if you see on the far right picture, that's congressional debate. Belle, Alyssa, and Gracie made it to state, and that is like Congress. They have certain bills they have to look over and prepare, and they speak on, and there's about 15 to 20 in each room, and it's just like a Congress. And it's really cool. These students get to share speeches and ask questions and challenge each other, and it's really awesome. And then for UIL, the spring, out of the 15 spots that we can take in our district, we took 14 of them, which is absolute domination in our district, which is really awesome. And then our region, which is full of all the Dallas area schools, we won our region as well this year, and that includes events like LD, which is one-on-one philosophy debate. It also includes events like prose and poetry, where you get to perform monologues, and you'll see one of those today. And extemp is something where you get to answer a question. They have 30 minutes to prep a seven-minute speech and memorize it. It's really, really impressive, and these kids do it at a very high level, and they have to have actual sources. So those are all the types of events that we compete in throughout the year. Thanks for asking that. And UIL, we had an amazing turnout. We had six entries to go to UIL State in 6A, and that's very difficult. We were the only 6A team that had that many entries this year, and we had four students. Two of them went in two events. Brennan Wood, right here, went in two events, LD and extemp. So did Alyssa, she's not here tonight, she was our president, and then Connor and Erica went in prose and poetry, and as you saw here, they both made finals. Connor got sixth place in the state, and Erica, and you're about to see her perform this, got state runner-up, second place, and that is out of hundreds and hundreds of students. You have to go from district to region to state for UIL. So this is at the highest level. We kept competing at the highest level this year, and now you qualify for Nationals in a totally different way. So the TFA and the state tournaments were separate. So the national tournament, you have one tournament, and we have a certain district, and it's all kind of the West Texas and Panhandle area, and you have to get top two in your event to qualify for Nationals. We had 21 qualify for Nationals, which is over half of our district this year, and you're only allowed to go to Nationals in one event, and we had a lot of students that qualified for two events. So we would have took even more. They do that so a lot of students are able to compete at Nationals. But it was at Louisville, Kentucky this year, which was really awesome, but at the national qualifier, we won everything, best speech team, debate team, and overall sweepstakes. And my assistant, Jose Villa Fuerte, got Assistant Coach of the Year in our district. I couldn't do this without him. We have a really cool thing where he doesn't live here, but he zooms in every day, and we, we thank the district for allowing him to do that, and he's awesome. So that was an awesome NSDA, and then we got to go to Louisville. It was awesome, went to Louisville, and actually, SISD bus got to take us, and it was awesome, so thank y'all for that. We drove, it was 16 hours, it was a lot of fun, and it was worth it. I think the kids had a great time, and we had an amazing showing at the national tournament. As you can see, we had a whole bunch of top 30 and top 15, which is really incredible. There's anywhere from like 150 to 500 students in these certain events that compete, and we had three final entries this year. And Belle Royer, a sophomore, she made finals in two events, which was incredible. Only three people did that in the entire nation, and she was one of them. She got fourth place in original spoken word and third in storytelling, and then Chloe Hansen, who is not here tonight, she couldn't make it, she was national runner-up in storytelling. And storytelling had over 500 students in it, and we had two of the six finalists. And that's an event where you pull from any children's book and you perform it like you're doing it to a child, and it's really cool. You get one chair, you get to perform it, and it's really awesome. What they get to perform is their voices, so we had an amazing year. I had, tried to go through that as quickly as possible, but we had a lot of awesome results, and we thank you for the support that you give us. And like Whitney said, I'm just thankful to do what I get to do with these kids. And then, just real quick, just a little plug, that when we have to compete, we compete at tournaments, and different schools host tournaments. We host one of the biggest and best tournaments in the state of Texas. It's a swing tournament, meaning it's a double tournament. We host two tournaments in one weekend, and schools from all over, 40, up to 40 schools of Dallas area, the Houston area, they come and compete, and we put it on. These kids put it on. But we always need help. We need judges to volunteer to judge these events, and anyone that can support us in any way, like businesses and restaurants. We had awesome businesses that gave so much awesome food for the hospitality and judges last year, and I'll continue to put that on y'all's calendar, but it's November 11th and 12th, so we would love for y'all to help with that, and that's another big reason. And if you need anyone watching this, if you'd like to help with our tournament, just email me and let me know. It's an awesome thing, and we're, we're glad that we're able to host one and be able to compete all around the state of Texas and continue the great work of having their voices heard and being professional, respectful, but also winning at the same time, and that's really important, and, and that's what I talk about in my classroom. But we have a lot of fun together, and I'm very excited for the year coming, and I'm going to miss a lot of the, all the seniors that are graduating. It's going to be a tough class that we lost, but we have a lot of great talent coming up. So if everyone would like to come up here, I'll introduce you, just if you line up right here. I'll just introduce their names real quick and what grade they're in, or if they just graduated, and you can kind of just give a little, "That's me, woo-hoo." All right, and you'll recognize a lot of these names I just announced through all the awesome things they've done. We'll just start over here. He is going to be a senior. This is Jack McLaughlin. Awesome. And going to be a junior, Belle Royer. Another rising junior, Ashton Droll. A graduate, sadly, but she's going to UT, Hook 'em Horns, Gracie Barker. Another graduate, Gavin Goodnight. A rising senior, Katie York. Another graduate, Bella Casillas. Another graduate, Erica Avila. A rising junior, Auburn Jamison. Another graduate, Connor Greenfield. A rising junior, Britten Hebert. An rising senior, Brennan Wood. These are all awesome, awesome kids, and there's a lot that couldn't make it today, but they are a big part of not just this program, but the school at Central High School, and I'm honored to be a part of their life. So thank y'all so much for what you've done and that we're going to continue to do together. So thank you very much. Like I mentioned, this is Erica Avila, and she got state runner-up in UIL 6A with this piece, and also seventh place in the nation. What this is, is different poetries that are written by other people, and she pulled together and made it a program to fight for something. And the categories for UIL, this is category A, this speaks to me. So it was something, they got to research and find and perform something that really truly speaks to them, and this is what you're about to see.
Five dollars. Five dollars, even though the bill was a hundred. I just try to stop. We are unsurvivables. We are lost, often hardest. We are filled with skills and abilities and dreams, and with all of that, with all of that, uncertain. Yet you still find this worthy of a living wage, and even more than you do. But a police will be sufficient enough for you to just think that we are good enough for best job. Every Sunday morning from 10 to 5, I pop into my local best job. Now, the 68% of high schools are also going to school. I just say, being a server is one of the hardest jobs to do, but in an 18-year-old who has to take care of my siblings and take girls, I have no choice. According to a study done by a Harvard Business Review in 2019, a staggering 90% of all female service workers have some form of sexual abuse. This speaks to me because I am a part of that person. I can tell you stories of men physically at ease to get to the table, being touched in a public female's looking quarters. Through the guise of pandemic, I was asked to clean my desk down and sign, so they can face your test. So through the poetry, that female server had increased candy. Schoolwork is stressed, that's not the law, at waitress by Linda Holt and waitress by Oliver. A bold and selection, because servers like me deserve way more respect than we are seen. Once I used to feel so joyful, so happy and lively, but all I am is just this shell of my former self because the stress is taking a huge toll. And at this hour, all of that noise is that they've never had another, I mean, I drink cups, I drink the silverware, and there's this man who leaves on the table, and I see him there. And I wouldn't stop him if he tried to touch me. See, working here long enough, you learn that people talk a lot better than you do. But tonight, we only saw the risky love are the ones that he leans into, and in the back there's sizzles and grills and he's saying these words that are fried in the pot of his mouth. This day is coming, but I mean, what are you trying to do? Give me a sip. No, but I want to speak to him. Of course, I'll get it. And since he's at all of you now, it's just special. Working in the white corner just trying to make my family proud, but slowly diminishing my sanity. We stand on our feet 12 hours a year. We provide you with delicious supplements. We support you with your industry innovation at the cost of our physical health. We rescue you for overdose and alcohol use when you lock yourself in the bathroom. We put out fires when you have lit them, and we keep the floors nice and dry when the rain comes sweeping in, and we unclog the toilets when you decide not to flush and be upset. Please, if those are not us, you are forced to sound a little dangerous. Is that what I said? Hey. Why do you go there, you silly? Tea cake. Smile, smile, sma- Hey, you are the best server we've ever had. Thank you so much for making our night so special.
Wow, what a powerful communicator and storyteller, and we are so proud of every single one of you, and y'all's future is bright, and seniors or graduated seniors, we can't wait to see what y'all do, and we can't wait to see what the upcoming school year is for the rest of you. I do want to let y'all know that that does conclude our recognitions for this evening. We will do the Shannon one next month, so congratulations, we're so proud of y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Evers, and all your group. Hopefully every year we'll be able to do a presentation. I've, I've been, and some of the other board members have seen what's your spotlight or your showcase or whatever, and, but many persons in the community don't know all the great things your students do, so we're all proud of you. You do great. You represent our school district well, and you're ambassadors for our community, and really special, so keep up all the good work. Okay, let's see. That was a very moving presentation, by the way. I almost need to take a break. I almost need to take a break. It's kind of hard to get back on our board agenda. Okay. Well, now we need to approve our minutes for the June 8th, 2022 meeting or June 13th, 2022 meeting or June 20th, 22 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Kingman and a second by Mr. Gagos to approve this agenda items or any other board discussion. Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion passes. At this time, before we get to public comments on topics not on our agenda, I did need to mention that Mr. Dindel is not here tonight. He is helping with church camp, I think, this week, isn't that correct? So he'll be back hopefully at our next board meeting. Right. This is what I said in our script, we have a time for public comments on topics not on our agenda and we have a person who has signed up to speak tonight and it's John Weber. Mr. Weber, if you're here, if you'll come forward, this is your opportunity to speak. Be sure to just identify yourself for our record and then you can go right ahead and
So just go ahead and state my name. My name is John Weber. So I'm a 1991 graduate of Central High School. Sorry, all the heat and the dust. I was a three-sport athlete there at Central, went on, played college, some college football, college soccer, and we've been a homeschool family for 23 years. And we became a homeschool family not because of the fact that it wasn't anything to do with public school, it was because of the fact that where our lives were at the time, we were youth slash college pastors and, you know, we had kids at our house till 1:00 in the morning at times and it just didn't work out. So we just, you know, my daughter, I think, was five at the time, and so it just, it just made more sense for us to go that direction, kind of just stuck with it. So just to kind of summarize even my involvement, like with youth and so, 1920, right? Okay, so 1920, I was at John Glenn and so I taught eighth grade and I did IT class. Then basically with that, I've coached for the other 31 years. I started coaching right out of, out of high school. I got drug in. Back in the day, you probably remember, there was a sophomore soccer team. I got drug into coaching that and so I was pretty much the forever volunteer coach. And so had a huge involvement. The year before, Lakeview High School soccer team went UIL. I coached that team and kind of established that for Mr. Alcala to take that over. And so in saying all that, I just want to make it very clear that it's not at all a stab against public school or that's not why we went this direction. And so, and I know my time is brief, so basically what I would like to talk a little bit about is just the Tim Tebow bill that has come forth and so hopefully y'all aren't looking at it as me opening up a can of worms, like, you know, it's hopefully an opportunity and hopefully a direction that we can go as a district. Sure, most of you know that Wiley was approved last year for 2223. Abilene has been approved and I've visited with several of the individuals in that area. Before that, I have a daughter that graduated 2018. She went on, played college soccer for South Alabama, real great, good athlete and so it's been kind of kicked around, I mean, when she was a sophomore. So it's kind of been in the, in the workings for that long for athletes to be, or homeschool athletes to be able to participate in UIL sports, but it just now got approved. But now, which again, I don't think is a bad thing, it's, they basically, when it got approved, it was broken up into districts. So as of now, there's, or I'm sorry, in 2021, when it first passed, there was 21 districts that had approved it and I want to say that that's been about doubled as of now. And so my, my biggest hope is that I just have the opportunity to just kind of like squash all the assumptions with homeschool and UIL participation. You know, that's my main goal, most of all. It's not messy, it's not this horrific horrible thing, it's not going to impact in a negative way, like I feel like a lot of times administrators and even coaches, you know, feel that it will. And so this, my wife, Ms., these are my two twins, Blaze and Justice, so they'll be freshmen this year. And so I just figured, you know, this would be a good time to hopefully visit. So she's volleyball soccer player. Blaze is baseball, possibly back into soccer player, we'll see how it goes. And I have visited with some of the coaches and their feelings on it. Just to kind of throw this out there, Blaze has been going to morning workouts with Coach Penry and he really likes him as a, as a student, as an, and an athlete a lot. And so he's the one that kind of asked me about, you know, Blaze's situation and what was happening and, and that he would really like for Blaze to try out and so that kind of, I guess for me, stirred the pot. 35 states right now in the nation are allowing UIL homeschoolers to, or 35 states allow homeschoolers to participate in UIL sports right now. I've known several from different states and, and I've visited with them, so it's not just hearsay and that it's, it's really a seamless thing. It's not a lot of, like I said, not a lot of red tape like you would think. And I'll just be honest with you guys, that there's a lot of homeschoolers that are against this bill, which just absolutely irritates me and blows my mind all in one, you know, because I think it's a great thing and, you know, so, but that's really, I mean, like I said, I mean, I feel like there's no reason for me to expand at this point and take any more of y'all's time and I'll, I'm, what? So phenomenal, by the way, and I had the opportunity to teach Ms. Hebert over there when I was teaching and just incredible student, so incredible girl, but, so I'll get with him and he'll send me his best when I do come back, right? And, you know, so that's all that I have, honestly, because I really feel like there's no reason to take more of your time at this point in time. So I would love to visit more, whether y'all call me into your office or however that works, because I honestly not know. So I'm just leaving it to you guys from this. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Weber, we appreciate you coming. I would recommend if you haven't, get with Dr. Detloff and he can, if it's something that Dr. Detloff thinks the board needs to consider, then he can bring it to us. Okay? Thank you for bringing your family. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, now we have, that's, we're going to miss all you guys.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thanks again for coming. Thank you.
Y'all have a good rest of y'all.
Thank you. Dr. Jason Skelton's here to update us on Everyday Labs Absence Prevention Program.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Detloff, thank you for giving us this time to talk about, a little bit about Everyday Labs and our partnership with them on the Absence Prevention Program. We brought in Dr. Nicole Bosworth. She's here to discuss a little bit about the impact in our partnership from their end of it. Everyday Labs was a good support for us this year when it came to absence prevention, learning how to develop attendance teams on the campuses. They did some, they did some professional learning with our service workers and at-risk coordinators with our principals and all around preventing absences and the interventions. So I'd like to bring up Dr. Bosworth to discuss a little bit from their end, their impact, and then we'll take some questions if you guys have any.
As Jason said, I'm Dr. Nicole Bosworth. I've had the pleasure of working in some capacity, supporting and collaborating with San Angelo ISD for many years now. And I really appreciate your flexibility. I don't know if you remember, but I was actually supposed to be here in person last month, but my mom was in the hospital and I didn't really want to be on the screen. I really wanted to be here to share this work. I'm so excited and I'm happy to report she's home, she's recovering and she'll start her 46th year of teaching high school English after late. So of course, you know, I'm an educator at heart and I wanted to share a little bit of background about who we are at Everyday Labs and what we do very briefly, but we have a research and development lab out of Harvard and we run randomized control trials all over the country and we come up with, we have interventions to reduce chronic absenteeism and also really focus on how to effectively communicate and engage with really young families. So that's a little bit about our work. We combine behavioral science, so Dr. Todd Rogers is our founder and he is a behavioral scientist by trade. We combine behavioral science and data science to create our intervention. And our intervention is a tier-one universal prevention. And so what we aim to do is to catch students and change behaviors and remove barriers to attendance before students become chronically absent. So, you know, I talked a lot to Shelley and Farrah and Jason this year that our goal at the end of the year was really reducing that stack of truancy notices at the end of the year, really preventing and engaging those families earlier in the process and connecting families in real time with critical resources. So as important as reducing chronic absenteeism and focusing on the attendance, we really wanted to spend equal amounts of time with that human-to-human connection with families and removing barriers to attendance and connecting families in real time with those resources that they need to get their child back in class. So as I just mentioned, we fall into a tier-one category. So what you're looking at here, this is a pyramid from Attendance Work. So we partner really closely with Hedy Chang, who is the founder of Attendance Work and she has been doing attendance research and prevention for decades. And this pyramid really describes a multi-tiered systems of support for students. One of the main reasons I wanted to be here in person was to brag on San Angelo ISD a little bit. This is a space that you do better than almost any district I've worked with in the country. You have really taken the last several years and looked at academics, behavior and attendance, obviously the three kind of buckets, if you will, that really impact student outcomes the most, and you have put in place systems of supports for students and for families across all three of those buckets, tier-one, tier-two and tier-three. Tier-one is that universal prevention. When you get into talking about tier-two and tier-three, that is really kind of more in-depth, more intensive intervention that is happening on the ground. So what we aim to do in the Attendance Work, tier-one universal prevention, like I mentioned earlier, really catching students before they become chronically absent, but being able to support Shelley and Farrah and Jason on the ground, letting them know what barriers are your students and families experiencing in day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month? What can you do on the ground in a more intensive way to help remove those barriers, create intervention groups, et cetera? So over the past several years, we know two of those years were some of the hardest that we faced in education and it's really amazing to me that across all three of those buckets, this district has seen movement in the needle. It has seen impact and improvement. So I really, really mean, mean it when I say it is just incredible to see the work that has happened on the ground in all three of those spaces. Obviously, I came in and have been supporting in that attendance bucket this year, but we've really seen impact across the board, which has been phenomenal. So what we've done is again, supporting SAISD, your recovery efforts. Hedy Chang, I mentioned earlier, she said something a couple of months ago that really stuck with me. She said, you know, the data, the past two years, specifically attendance data, has been really ugly. Been ugly across the board nationwide. Districts who did not shy away from that data and continued to implement and continued to forge ahead in the work have really been the districts who have seen impact, positive impact on student outcome. So we really aim to support you all, reducing chronic absenteeism, engaging families and providing those real-time connections to critical supports and resources, specifically during COVID. You'll see up here, we heard from many families via text or via a phone call with what supports they needed. Attendance, health and wellness, transportation was big. So that is something that we were able to say, hey, we were receiving several calls or several texts with families experiencing transportation barriers of some sort. So that's an example on the ground where you're able to get students immediately on a bus route if they weren't before, or you're able to look at your transportation and bus routes and say, is there a neighborhood where a lot of these phone calls are coming from? So that's a, that's a real-time example of where we were able to help remove barriers. We heard about technology and login and we heard about food needs, basic needs, food, housing, et cetera. So again, when families call or when they text in real time, we're able to be kind of that tier-one initial stop where we're supporting your work and we're able to connect those families in real time with those, without them having to jump through a lot of hoops. So we have a multilingual family support team that fields these initial phone calls when they receive our communications and we heard a lot about clarifying excused and unexcused absences. So one thing that we really anchor in is that in absences and absences and absence, because students missing days of school really lead to lost instructional time, lost connection with caring adults, sometimes a safe place to be, food. And so we really like to build capacity with families when they call. So if they call and say, hey, I know Shelley missed 14 days of school so far this month, but 12 of those were excused. Our family support team is highly trained to take that one to two minutes with a parent or a caregiver and build capacity around, yes, we know if you flip over this letter, you're going to see transparent absence tracking, all the dates and times of the absence and whether it was excused or unexcused. But Shelley missed a lot of school and that's a lot of lost instructional time. Is there something going on? Is there a barrier to attendance that I can help you with while I have you on the line? So that support was really powerful, again, in identifying barriers and helping families remove those barriers to attendance, change Shelley's trajectory. So some impact stats for you guys. 71% of students improved their attendance rate since the intervention began, and I'm talking about the treated students. 24% of students improved chronically absent to non-chronically absent since their intervention began. 37% of students improved their absence a tier since intervention began. So again, when we looked at that pyramid, we're thinking about really moving them down those tiers. 50% of schools improved their attendance rate among treated students since intervention began. And 88% of schools reduced their chronic absence rate among treated students since intervention began. And based on our randomized controlled trials and our formula out of our lab, we estimate that we helped prevent, along with all of the other systems of support that you have in place, over 3,800 absences prevented across over 6,800 students who were a male or a text nudge. So our intervention includes both mail-based, snail mail communication and also a text message that's bi-weekly, but our text message is actually a two-way chatbot and that is one way we're able to communicate with families at any time. And that translates into over 1.3 million minutes of instructional time recovery, which is really exciting. is really exciting to think about. So we're really looking forward to another year of supporting San Angelo's families and students and preventing one-off absences around critical learning windows. Something else that we do is we work really closely with your dynamic team and look at your academic calendar, and when is it really critical to mail and communicate with these families and reengage these families around critical testing windows? We look at holidays, et cetera. And so we really know when our mail or digital communications land and have the most impact. We want to aim to prevent up to 7,000 absences this year. We're hoping, hoping for a more normalized school year and a more normalized dataset this year as things continue, continue to stabilize. We want to gain an estimated 2.6% in instructional time and increase the ROI of other curricular and instructional investments, not only ADA, but thinking about, you know, teachers and counselors and social workers, et cetera, being able to take the tier-one load off their plate so that they can focus time, effort, energy, budget on those really, really important tier-two and tier-three resources on the ground. And we want to continue to make critical resources available and accessible to all of our families. So I'll pause here, take any questions before I depart. But again, thank you so much for the opportunity to share the impact tonight and to be here in person. You have any questions for Jason or I?
I do have a question. That's, that's a pretty lofty goal as far as the number of absences. Are you going to do anything different or just continue doing what you're doing and hope for improvement? Does that make sense?
So we, we've been in communication with them over the summer because after the first year, we realized there are some things that we'd like to do a little bit different. But we're going to, I believe that as we tweak this for next year, we're going to have a better improvement with, we noticed that at the beginning of the year, we have our own system that sends out attendance notes, and then we had them sending out attendance notes, which was bogging things down. Parents were getting a lot of notes. And so we're going to tweak that on our end to make sure that we're basically funneling in the best, the best possible approach for, for our families.
And I would add to that, too. As I said, I think coming out of COVID another year, we're going to see data normalize a little bit and stabilize a little bit more than last year. We also are hoping that families, you know, some, one of the things that we communicate with families all year long was what was safe and normal about being back in school in person. And, you know, we're really hoping that families feel a little bit more comfortable from the jump this year so that we don't see huge spikes certain months like we did last year where families just felt really, really nervous about being back in class. So, and I think, you know, getting some systems straightened out. Our communications, where they differ is they are customized to each individual student based on individual student attendance data. So Shelley, who has missed 40% of the school days so far, is going to get a completely different communication than Farah, who's missed 5%. Our student selection criteria is students who have missed 5% to 95% of school days in that given unit.
Thanks.
I'll just, I'll add something into that.
You need to go to school more often, too, Shelley.
I know, I know. I'm the one, apparently I'm the one. So one of the things that we tried to do this year is shift some of the role of our school service workers and our at-risk coordinators because they were spending an inordinate amount of time being the people who generated the letters, mailed the letters, sent the letters. And so by moving that over to letting Everyday Labs help us with that, what we're working to do now is to retrain our service workers to do more of that tier-two and tier-three intervention we're talking about so that they're having opportunities for those students who are chronically absent to really get in there with those families and help them with the needs that they have. So I think that system, too, and we're talking about our MTSS framework, when you work on an MTS framework, the first thing you work on is your tier-one. And that's what we did academically, that's what we've done behaviorally, and now that's what we're doing with attendance. And then that allows you to have more capacity to work on your tier-two and tier-three. And I think that's where we'll make a lot of difference this year with our people.
Dr. Bosworth, in your studies, have you guys come up with any conclusions of where these students went? We have some that, that have, I think most school districts have certainly larger school districts, they're in the hundreds. We identified maybe four or 500. But many, we can't, we don't know what happened to them. We don't see them go into another district where not even, maybe even able to contact them because we don't know where they are. If your study's showing what's happened to those students?
It, it varies, but I will say you're, I mean, you're right on. In one of the largest urban school districts that we've partnered with for the last three years, they, they lost 20% that have just not returned. And they're similar situation where they're like, we don't see them popping up anywhere else. But in Texas, I mean, we've seen a variety. We've seen homeschool, we've seen charters and privates rise in certain areas. We've seen moving, relocating altogether. But something that we have put in place that has helped at least identify, there's two strategies that we're using to identify some of that or work through some of those issues. Number one is we're really being diligent about having updated and correct contact information for our families. And so what, what we have found through COVID is a lot of families were more mobile and transnational, and many of the addresses on file, we go to mail, and we always mail to the address on file with the National Change of Address Registry and the U.S. Postal Service versus when a district goes to mail, they're mailing what's in their SIS system, their student information system, and what the, the last known address that the family has given. And so we've been able to supply our district partners with a lot of updated contact information, which has really helped reengage some of those families who were off the grid. I'll give an example in Texas, in Dallas ISD, for example, they had Operation Come Back to focus on this, and we really helped support contact information collection and some re-enrollment strategies. So those two things really helped reengage some families that had just been off the grid for, you know, six months or longer. So that might be something to look at, making sure we have, when we do our mailed communications twice a year, we recommend on the back, Dr. Rogers, in his behavioral science work says when you auto-populate things for families, it makes them easier and makes it more likely that they're going to respond. For example, if a family receives our communication on the back, it auto-populates, this is the current address that we have on file for your family. And if a family looks at that and says, you know what, that's two addresses ago, but when they see it in black and white, they're more likely to pick up the phone or log in and update it versus at the beginning of the year, sending out the communication normally do saying, hey, everybody, log into Parent Portal and update your contact information. But the, the re-enrollment strategies, doing that in the early spring and throughout the summer months, and having some in-the-community outreach as well around re-enrollment and re-engaging families who have not come back, those things have really helped boost numbers in some of the Texas districts that we're.
Where are you from?
I live in Dallas.
All right. We appreciate you coming tonight. Any other board team have questions?
Just one question. So you were saying you're targeting our 5% to 95% of absences. How many students is that a month that y'all are contacting?
It differs every month, but I think this year total, we treated just under 7,000 students. And it, it really depends on the month. So for example, if I remember looking at January, that was bad. That was really high. And so that was when we saw some spikes in absenteeism across the board. And, you know, we've, we've talked a little bit about what can be different this year. I know, too, like some of the, the COVID protocols have shifted, and that's being updated in the systems as well. So you don't have students at home for just really long leading time, quarantining, et cetera. But yeah, January was a month that we would have probably sent the most communications because students were racking up a lot of cumin.
Thank you to both of you, Dr. and Dr. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. So nice to be here.
And Dr. Farah Gomez, you're up.
President Parker, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, at your seats, you have a copy of SASD's Accountability Preliminary STAR Data from Spring 2022. Please let me stress that it is preliminary as we are still finalizing data as are all school districts. Official ratings will be published August 15th, and in August, we will come back and share further information with all of you. I think it's important, just with the last couple of years, we do go back and have an overview as we did have changes. So just to recap, we have what is included in STARS, there have been some changes in regards to reading and math for grades three through eight, that's covered in STAR. Science, specifically fifth and eighth grade. Social studies for eighth grade, and then an end-of-course for Algebra I, English I, English II, Biology, and U.S. History. You have STAR with embedded supports for students who qualify for this assistance. Embedded supports include examples such as text-to-speech, content and language supports. Again, students must be eligible to qualify for these online accommodations. Also, really want to stress the online administration. Our district did primarily test online this spring semester. There were very few paper administrations provided. Then if you'll see there on the right, graduation and promotion requirements. In addition, students must pass STAR end-of-course assessments in Algebra I, English I, English II, Biology, and U.S. History. Want to remind you that policy changed one aspect of STAR this year, specifically under House Bill 4545, fifth grade and eighth grade promotion requirements, excuse me, were eliminated. So there are no longer any high-stakes testing for elementary and middle school under STAR. And if you'll turn to your next page, additionally, under STAR, you have what's referred to as STAR Alternative II. This was developed to meet the federal requirements mandated under the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. That was previously known as No Child Left Behind. I know some of you have served for quite some time, or Nickelby. It assesses students in grades three through eight in high school who have significant cognitive disabilities and receive special education services. And lastly, TALPOS. TALPOS fulfills the federal requirements for assessing the English Language Proficiency, or ALPS, for our English Language Learners in kindergarten through grade 12. TALPOS assesses second language development in the domains of listening, speaking, reading, and writing. TALPOS results are used in several state and federal accountability and performance-based monitoring indicators. You'll turn your page. We won't take a super deep dive, just an overview of the domains assessed. So you have four areas for your three domains. You have Domain One for Student Achievement, Domain Two for School Progress. Domain Two includes a Part A, which is Academic Growth, and Part B, Relative Performance. And lastly, Domain Three, Closing the Gaps. For your Domain Two score, it's the better of Part A or Part B, and that's how you get the overall rating. You can see the percentages and how that's weighted overall. Now this is, the next slide is what I refer to as, for those of us that used to play Pac-Man, we jump on over to the Pac-Man slides because your ratings are different for elementary and middle school versus high school. So for elementary and middle school, you'll see we have the STAR Performance, or STAR Academic Growth, or STAR Performance, and the Best of Domain One, or Domain Two-A, or Domain Two-B. Clear as mud, right? This is difficult for even educators who deal with this on a regular basis, much less to the public and our parents. So basically, in the gist, this is combined over all the STAR subject areas evaluated, and credit is awarded for approaches grade level or above, Meets, and Masters. You'll see, though, as you look at percentages, we have Academic Achievement, Academic Growth, which we did not receive during the pandemic. We're going to talk more about that. And what a great job our teachers do when kids are present in classrooms, which is so timely with the report you just heard. You also see there the L proficiency, that's where TALPOS comes in, in closing the gaps. So if you turn to high school, it gets a little more complicated because now you have a new component, and that's why high school is different. You have the STAR Performance, or your STAR Academic Growth, your STAR Performance, and then the Best of again on your domains. You add in now graduation rate, L proficiency, and there's your college, career, military readiness. And again, closing the gaps. We will talk about that further when we have the ratings, but let's look at some preliminary numbers because we know those Pac-Man slides can be pretty heavy. Sorry, I didn't switch to the high school slide for those of you in the audience. Okay. So three through eight preliminary results. They're listed by grade level and content area for the subjects at each. So you'll, you'll see 2021, 2022 as compared to 2020, 2021. And just at a glance, you see some arrows. So in 21, 2022, all preliminary data, third grade, reading and math, fourth grade reading and math, fifth grade reading, you have blue arrows pointing up. So that shows a preliminary gain. If you look at fifth grade math in 21, 22, it was 65%, 2020, 2021, 65%. We could have done just an arrow constant because right now preliminary data shows we stayed the same. And then fifth grade science, again, a blue arrow. So an upward trend, again, want to really take note that our teachers do a great job when students are present in the classroom, making growth. Then if you turn the page, continuing on, sixth grade, reading and math, seventh grade reading and math, eighth grade reading and math, eighth grade science, eighth grade social studies, you continue to see the same trend. Let me turn. Advance the slide for the audience. I know those numbers are pretty hard to read on the slide for those of you in the audience. That's why I like a visual. Now if you go to your next page, end-of-course preliminary results. We have work to do in the area of our end-of-course. We'll be discussing our plans to address these areas as we continue to move forward for the next school year. In some areas, U.S. History, for example, 85% in 21, 22, 2020, 2021, 86%. So pretty, pretty close, however, it still was a decrease. In other areas, the decrease was more significant. For example, English II, 60% in 21, 22. For example, English II, 60% in 21, 22, 67% 2020, 2021. So the trend overall in the preliminary data shows an upward increase in grades three through eight, and less of an increase in our EOC preliminary results. We acknowledge this, and we'll discuss our action steps, as I stated, as we move forward. Again, recapping, official accountability ratings are released publicly on August 15th. Now, I want to remind all of you, the last time we received a rating as a district, the district was an overall rating of a B. So we are eager to see, once everything comes out, where the district stands as a whole, and we are prepared to continue to do what's best for students. We know that STAR is one data point, and we are continued to make, or we are committed to make the best choices for students and for staff. In terms of communication, we also want you to know that's very different. We don't just mail home a report card. So some of you may have students in the system, some of you, it might have been quite some time. So as I'm looking at some of you, you're like, I do have a student. So I want to see if you guys got this. June 24th, information went home, and, so Becky, this next one's linked, it should be, maybe not. So parents now get a code to log in, I'm seeing some heads nod up here, to log in to find out more about their children's results. They get to log in, they get a variety of resources and components, including each STAR question and answer, along with their child's answers, and additional resources as well. It's very different if you haven't had a child in the system from the way it was before. Additionally, there are other resources on the website that goes home on the family portal. So hopefully, this is not new to you, and if it is, we definitely want to visit with you, so we can get you additional information. There are very important upcoming changes that we need to make sure you're aware of. You'll hear talk about a STAR redesign. STAR is being redesigned and will require students to think critically. The test will be given with full online administration. You heard me report that the majority of our students tested online. We would report approximately 98% of our students tested online this past spring. This upcoming spring, it will require full online administration. Writing will also be assessed as part of the Reading Language Arts for the first time. Years past, you've heard us talk about fourth grade and seventh grade writing. You didn't hear that today. So this spring, it will be assessed as part of three through eight. So you'll hear a lot more about how this is being embedded in the curriculum and in the instruction as we move forward. It's not separated for a one-day test assessment. That's just a general overview for you this evening, as we talk more in the coming months and weeks. Do you have any overall questions that we can answer in regards to just the preliminary data?
I know we have things in place for MAP and the other things, the resources that teachers are using. As far as our end-of-course results, was, when we're looking at specific courses, we have, we have tools in place to monitor that throughout the year as well, or since that is new, we don't have as much of that?
So if you recall, this was the first year for high school to also administer MAP.
Okay, yes.
They did not have that prior.
So did it come as a surprise that our EOCs are where they are for the high school levels, or did that match our MAP?
MAP has been very accurate-
Thank you.
-in its administration. Any additional questions?
Fair, didn't they previously have a writing section, and they took it out, and now they're putting it back in?
Yes. It'll be, it's not a separate test. Previously, it's been a separate standalone. Now it's embedded as part of the reading assessment at all grade levels, three through eight, not just a special standalone assessment.
Okay. I know there was some criticism at some point in time about writing, and those that graded the writing were looking for certain buzzwords for, that's not a good, good term, but certain things that the student said automatically improve their score. So, pretty subjective, the writing section.
So to be a true reader and writer, you have to write every day on an ongoing basis, not just certain day. So-
We'll see.
-Reading Language Arts teachers would tell you, good readers and writers are always reading and writing. And this assessment will require you to be a regular reader and writer, not just certain years. You've heard criticism that some just teach to a test, in certain years, there's a lot of writing. So when it's assessed, three through eight, you have to be writing more frequently, is the thought. But yes, we would say writing is subjective, if it's graded for a standardized test.
Yeah, really subjective.
Any others?
I think that's it. Dr. Gomez, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready to get into our action items now. We have consent items A through H. A is consider donations. B, consider bid 22-007 athletic equipment. Consider bid 20-014 curriculum and instruction materials. D, consider public meeting date, set M&amp;O tax rate, used in district tax rate, public notification. E, consider resolution to designate officer to calculate tax rate. F, consider superintendent's recommendation for personnel for school year 2022 and 2023. And we also have an additional, eight names on our desk to consider, in addition to those we may have gotten last week. Consider board meeting dates and activities. It's G and H, consider board operating procedures and standards. All of these items we discussed last week. Is there anybody that wants to pull any of these items? If not, do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to-
Go ahead.
Motion to approve consent items A through H, as listed above, with the addition of the addendum on our desk of the eight contract recommendations.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Dr. Kingham in the segment, excuse me, a second by Mr. Lehman to approve this item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. Now I have Mr. Henry come up to consider RFP 22-004 property and casualty insurance.
Dr. Detloff, members of the board, thank you for having me here tonight. The first RFP that I bring you is for our insurance. In May of 2020, the district experienced the largest hail claim in recent years, with hail reported more than four inches in diameter. This affected a large amount of our facilities. With the frequency of hail storms in north and central Texas combined with hurricanes in the southeast Texas, and Winter Storm Yuri in 2021, property losses were the third highest in the past 10 years. This has put enormous pressure on insurers, resulting in many refusing to renew coverage or even leaving Texas markets altogether. For those that are still in the market, coverage deductibles and premiums have risen dramatically, putting strains on school district budgets across the state. Our current property coverage, our current property coverage, casualty, legal liability, and vehicle insurance is through Property Casualty Alliance of Texas, also known as PCAT, and managed by Edwards Risk Management. They have been great partners for the district for years. The district chose to use Bob Rhine, insurance consultant, to put together an RFP for the district for our renewal, for our new insurance. Through this RFP, we received one proposal from USI, and PCAT provided renewal directly to the district. As anticipated, price quotes for property coverage came in with an increase. Attached, you will find a recap of our proposal and our current rates. Our annual premiums will go up about $233,000, with our wind and hail deductible staying firm at 2%. Most of our increases came from the 21% increase in property values this year, and the $17 million 2022 storm claim. At this time, I'm going to invite Walker Trudeau, Walker Trudeau from Edwards Risk Management up here, and he's going to, he has a few things he'd like to share with you, and he can answer any questions as well.
Good evening. I'd just like to take a quick opportunity to thank the San Angelo ISD Board of Trustees, Dr. Detloff, for allowing me to be here today. I'm here today, it's a little bit bittersweet. I think most of you know Rick Edwards has served as the district's property and casualty representative since 2017. Rick also served San Angelo ISD in other capacities since 2005. We lost Rick Edwards on May 7th unexpectedly to a brain aneurysm, and so, you know, it's difficult being here today, but the opportunity is Rick has always encouraged me over the last 15 years, Rick and I were fortunately to be very close, he was my mentor, we've been working together, school districts, whether it be work comp, property casualty, or unemployment. And so, you know, I just, it's difficult being here, but I thank you for your time. I want to share a little bit about Dr. McFarland and Jason Henry, and the job that they've done with the property and casualty insurance. I think both of these gentlemen know your property and casualty insurance very well. We've had many conversations over the last six months on kind of what we were expecting, and I'm going to really hit some of those points that Jason mentioned, just to kind of reinforce what we expected. These are the things that we knew coming into the '22 renewal season. We knew 2021 was the third highest property loss year in the last 10 years. Winter Storm Yuri, 10 billion estimated property losses. Okay? We're also entering a market where cyber insurance is being identified as the greatest risk to insurance carriers, and we're seeing a mass exodus of insurers wanting to provide cyber insurance. Jason also mentioned the property losses that San Angelo ISD has incurred over the last three years. Over $14 million paid out on behalf of San Angelo ISD in the last three years. So your experience has been significant. Those are the things we knew coming into the property market. And so our expectation is that, A, we're entering a hard-in property market, which means we're seeing rates increase and deductibles increase. That's what we knew. What you receive from the Property Casualty Alliance of Texas program was a renewal that produced an overall increase less than 15%. And so we were very pleased with the renewal that PCAT's providing San Angelo ISD. More than 50% of that increase in rate was due to your total insured values. I think we could all sit here today and say our property values are increasing, they're increasing at a rate much higher than what we saw with PCAT. We saw approximately 8% increase in total insured values for San Angelo ISD. I have to share with you that many school districts throughout the state are seeing property insurance and their values increase significantly, and much higher, approximately 10 to 15%. And so PCAT has done a very good job of proactively managing your insured values. And so it's not always easy to look at those insured values, because when you have a 3% increase in your insured values, you're going to have a 3% increase in your contribution. And so PCAT has done that year after year after year to ensure that they have adequate values for their reinsurers that are backing the school districts. Reinsurers take on the majority of risk with school districts, okay? PCAT is an interlocal agreement. They're basically taking that risk and that exposure, and reinsurance is taking the majority of that risk. When you look at San Angelo ISD's property values, over $500 million in facilities. So when you look at PCAT, they're taking on a very small percentage of that risk, and the reinsurers, and you're talking about Lloyds in London, some of the largest domestic and international reinsurers in the world are taking this risk and exposure, and that's where the majority of your property and casualty increases are going to come from. Overall, we saw about an 8% increase in your insured values, and about a 6% increase in your rate. So we're a little less than 15%. And I can tell you from what we see in the market, we represent many school districts throughout the state, I was very pleased with those results. We saw less than 15% rate increase. We saw no change in your deductible for your wind and hail coverage, you stayed at 2%. We also saw no limitations on your roofs. Many, many carriers in the market today are putting limitations on single-ply roofs, okay? And that's the type of composition that your roofs are made of. PCAT is one of the programs that has not put any limitation on your roofs. That means you have replacement cost coverage for roofs up to 20 years old, okay? So 100% replacement cost coverage up to 20 years old, after 20 years, it goes to ACV, okay? And the ACV at 20 years is pretty standard in the market. What is not standard is that replacement cost coverage for years one through 20. So overall, very pleased with the results. We also know that PCAT's offering a multi-year addendum that basically states your rate will not increase by more than 10%. If at any point your rate increases by more than 10%, you can leave the program without penalty. There's no other program in the state that is doing that. I think we would all take a 10% rate increase on our property right now, just seeing some of the faces today. And so as we look and we talk about PCAT, it's an interlocal agreement, this is an interlocal agreement that has approximately 170 school districts throughout the state of Texas providing their property and casualty insurance. My recommendation, based on what we've seen in the market, is that PCAT's providing you the best opportunity to protect your fund balance through your deductibles and your coverage. They have the most comprehensive coverage of the market, we believe, no limitations on your roof, your deductible didn't change, and you've got that multi-year agreement. So I'll stop there and answer any questions that you may have.
Anyone with the board have questions? I appreciate you being here. Where did you come, what city did you try from?
We're from Marble Falls, work with Edwards Risk Management. Edwards Risk Management was founded in 1991 by Jerry Edwards, Rick Edwards, and Russ Edwards. Jerry Edwards actually started the Tasby Risk Management Fund in 1980, and in 1991, spun off with Edwards Risk Management. I'll tell you, it's a different type of organization. We're very committed and dedicated to our clients and serving the students and the staffs of your school districts. We want to do what's best for you, and we've had conversations with Jason and Dr. McFarland about doing what's best for San Angelo ISD. As we've looked at this property casualty insurance, I truly believe this has been a great renewal for the district based on the circumstances. I'd love to be up here telling you your rates are decreasing, but based on where we are as an economy, we have shortages on labor, inventory, all those things really have come together, along with the losses that the property reinsurers have taken over the last five years. We were at a conference in West Virginia in March, and we're hearing reinsurers are running about 120% loss ratio over the last five years. So they're driving your property rates. It's not PCAT, you know, PCAT is an interlocal agreement, any equity that that program maintains is your equity and the other members' equity, and so what they want for you is long-term stability, and that's what we believe PCAT really shines. We believe they're going to provide you the lowest long-term cost for your property casualty insurance.
Thank you again. Board, if there's not any other questions, do anyone have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve- Yes, let me turn, let me start this over. I'll make a motion to approve PCAT's renewal as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Gallegos- I have a, uh, motion to approve by Mr. Gallegos and a, uh, second by Ms. Mazel Flint. Uh, is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion passes. If you're driving home tonight, be careful. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
All right, Mr. Henry, you're up again. Custodial Services, this is, we had a, I'll just make mention, we had a presentation by the company that you recommended, uh, that, uh, last week at our pre-agenda meeting and we appreciate you having those persons here.
Absolutely. Uh, over the course of the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two school year, this custodial department has continued to have problems with filling all of its positions. Custody, the custodial department has attended three job fairs and received a total of three applications. The district has added retention stipends, increased pay by five percent and tried adding part-time night workers to entice prospective employees. As they approached June with nineteen openings, which Tony had updated me and since I wrote this, they've actually lost three more and had three more openings. It was decided that we needed to do something different. We prepared an RFP for contract custodial services for Glenn Middle School, Lone Star Middle School, Bonham Elementary, Lamar Elementary and Santa Rita Elementary. Our current estimated cost of cleaning these campuses is eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars, including labor and supplies. This bid packet asked for pricing two ways. One would offer a full turnkey solution and the other would offer cleaning only with the district supplying paper and chemicals. We received five quality submissions and asked the three low bidders to return for interviews. Interviews were attended by district directors, principals and custodial supervisors. All companies had high-level staff attend, in attendance and presented their services. After the interviews, the bids were scored and Kings Clean received the highest score. The administration recommends contracting with Kings Clean for turnkey custodial services at a monthly cost of sixty-two thousand, twenty-two dollars per month with the option to add additional campuses at a negotiated price. Do y'all have any questions?
As I mentioned to the, to the audience, we had, um, a lot of questions in, um, a presentation last week. So board members, you have, we, we wanted to, rather than put this on a consent, uh, we wanted the public to know what we were doing here because it's a little different than we've ever done. I mean, it's caused from the, uh, lack of, uh, applic- uh, applications being filled in our custodial department and this was, seemed to be a reasonable solution. So any other board comment or questions? If not, uh, anyone gonna make, anyone wanna make a motion to approve?
I make a motion that we, uh, recommend, we, um, contract with Kings Cleaning for turnkey custodial services at a monthly cost of sixty-two thousand and twenty-two dollars per month.
And I'll second that motion. So we have a motion by Mr. Lehman, a second by Mr. Parker. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say the same. Motion passes. All right, I think you're up again. Mr. Henry, uh, no, it's the PAYS restroom, which you told us last week, we didn't have, we hadn't received bids yet, so.
Bids are in.
Okay.
During the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, the PAYS eighteen-plus program showed increased numbers and will increase with the movement of students next year. This vocational program is a TEA-approved work and academic program designed to assist young adults ages eighteen to twenty-two with neurological and emotional differences transitioning from high school to successful employment through, through relationship-centered education. With the increased student load, the PAYS building will require the addition of a full bathroom. Speci- specifications and plans were developed and sent to firms who do this type of work. We received two bids. McCray Company was not only the highest score, but also the low bid. Their prices include all materials and labor for this project. The administration recommends that we contract with McCray Company of San Angelo for the addition of a bathroom at the PAYS, at PAYS School and accept the alternate number one for a total of a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred. Do y'all have questions?
One question, they thought they'd be able to finish this by October or so, or start in, what was the initial?
When we, when we met with contractors, what we explained to them is that we needed the heavy, heaviest portions of it done before school ever started. Uh, we've talked to McCray Company and they should have a large portion of it done by August fifteenth is what they're shooting for, which would be the major construction. We did put a later date in there to finish up mainly punch list type stuff, little painting and stuff like that. Probably our biggest concern was being able to work around students at that facility and McCray has come forward and said that they will, uh, work nights and weekends to make sure that, uh, that they didn't disrupt this program as well. So that expanded a little bit of extra time towards the end as well.
Have we worked with this company before?
We, I have not worked with this company. Uh, Kai Frankie is the architect on this job and, uh, I lean on Kai whenever we have our firms that I don't know. He's done several jobs with them and he says they're spot-on, that they, they would more than be able to do this job and do it well.
And then obviously it came in above the RFP that we put out there, which was optimistic probably to start out with, but, um, we're comfortable with this, is something that we need done now for this upcoming year?
It is something that we, we need for this upcoming year. Uh, right now, they don't have, they have just a regular bathroom in that facility. And with the addition of this, not only, I think probably the biggest concern is staff and getting, getting handicap people in and out of a regular bathroom is completely different than a handicap accessible bathroom. Uh, being able to use a lift and it also adds a shower for those inconvenient times when things happen that they might need a shower as well.
Doesn't it also provide an, an additional exit from the building?
Yes, it does. Uh, uh, alternate number one has a exit that would go out the back of PAYS, uh, which would not only be a additional safety feature, but it also opens up that back area, which is actually pretty nice, that between the tennis courts there at Glenn to use for, uh, probably, most people would say outdoor classroom area, but I'm, I'm gonna assume it will probably be used more for dining due to the small, uh, size of the dining facility that they have there.
And Mr. Henry, I know we've had many discussions around this and I think the complexity in it is, um, you know, engaged with a, an architect firm right now, um, looking at options for our schools, uh, and possibly some restructuring of facilities, uh, because many of our facilities are, um, need, uh, restructuring and are outdated and we've discussed that in our previous board meetings. I think the complexity in this is, uh, if two or three years down the road, our PAYS facility is relocated, um, because certainly those, uh, current, um, buildings are aging, um, and are actually a portable type of structure, uh, that was installed probably thirty years ago. Um, so it's, you know, placing, I, I think, I remember purchasing a four-bedroom brick home for this amount. Um, so that's, you know, makes you gulp, uh, certainly. Um, but I think if you look at, you know, projecting this out over even a three-year period, uh, most likely, uh, we would keep this facility running. Um, as you mentioned, it, it's, uh, helpful for our employees, but most importantly, um, for our students that may have some, uh, neurological disorders, mobility, um, uh, issues that, and challenges that, um, we can, uh, allow them to be successful as long, uh, as providing a, you know, e- exit opportunities and as well as with the shower. Um, I do keep forgetting that this has a shower component, um, as well.
And you know, this makes me think of, the first year that I came to work in, here in, uh, in this role, um, we proposed to do a window project over at Austin and they started working up the plans and then we got into bond discussions. And I can remember going to, uh, Dr. Bright at that time and I told him, I said, are we sure we want to do these windows when we have this bond out there? And I said, what if this bond passes and then we end up tearing out all these windows? And his response was, well, Jason, what if we don't pass the bond, then we still have the old aging facilities that we had previously? And as, as we all know, the bond didn't pass, the windows were replaced and we ended up with a better facility in the end. We did do a little bit of research just to kind of come up with a plan B and, uh, I went back and looked just for, uh, numbers. In two thousand and eighteen, we bought a portable and placed it over at, at Glenn Middle School and it's just two classrooms, no bathroom, nothing, just two classrooms, two, two closets. And that was almost seventy thousand dollars just for that one building. That was in two thousand and eighteen. We did get pricing recently, uh, doing some research on a two thousand and twenty-two portable classroom with two bathrooms and it was a hundred and fourteen thousand, but there was a year lead time on it to get it done. And that was just for a standard bathroom. So prices are definitely up on, on most things and lead times are even further.
Any other questions? Does the board wanna go forward with this? Anyone wanna make a motion?
Sure I will. Um, my, my motion would be that we contract with McCray Company of San Angelo for the addition of a bathroom and accept alternate one for a total of a hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred dollars plus architect fees.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Lehman and a second by Dr. Kingman, uh, to approve this item. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any other public comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And I noticed Mr. Frankie's been sitting out there patiently for this. I appreciate you being here, Mr. Frankie. Thank you. All right. Mr. Underwood is here to discuss our student code of conduct for next year for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year.
President Parker, Dr. Detloff, Board of Trustees, uh, thank you. Uh, each year, the school board must adopt a student code of conduct, as you know, uh, and the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three student code of conduct is the same format as the previous code that we have adopted. It is based on a model created by Walsh, Trevino, Russo and Kyle, uh, the district's current legal counsel. Uh, because there was no legislative changes or sessions this year, there were very small changes necessitated, uh, in the code, nothing, uh, that was necessitated by law. Uh, minor revisions included assignment lengths based on the twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar and then personnel title changes. Uh, based on conversation and comments from the board last week, we've made some minor adjustments, uh, around, uh, teacher removals and the length and time in which we hold a, um, conference when that, when that occurs. Uh, and then one other piece that was removed, uh, for, um, identified misbehavior. Um, we do recommend that this would be a pass by the board and as soon as that happens, we can post that up on the parent port, not the parent portal, but the parent portion of the website, uh, so that as parents are registering their child, they can go ahead and access that, uh, now in July as opposed to waiting in August. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Will we be providing printed copies of this for parents, just in case?
Uh, parents can request that and we can provide that to them. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Underwood?
No, just thanks for your work on this. We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I would just encourage, uh, parents to be sure that they're aware of the student code of conduct, uh, even though there's not any real changes, it's still, uh, every year, it seems something might happen and parents and students said they weren't aware that they were doing something that was, um, breaking one of our school rules. So all parents and students need to be aware of the student code of conduct. With that said, I will make the motion that we, uh, pass our student code of conduct for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three as been outlined by Mr. Underwood.
Second.
Or it's second by Mr. Gallegos. Motion's been made by me and the second by Mr. Gallegos. Is there any other board discussion? Is there any public comment? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
I'm looking at the board members to see if there's anything we need. I think we decided we're not going into closed session tonight, but, uh, maybe we will at a pre-agenda meeting. Unless anybody has anything different, then I'm gonna read the announcements and we will adjourn. So I'm looking at everybody to see if anybody has anything different. All right, well, good. Then our announcements will be, we've got several meetings coming up. Our finance pre-agenda workshop is August eighth. Our convocation, S A ISD convocation, that'll be at the San Angelo Stadium this year is August tenth at eight-thirty AM. Our regular board meeting is August fifteenth at five forty-five PM. And a special meeting to adopt budget is August twenty-ninth at, uh, five forty-five PM. Unless there's anything else, and I see no one saying so, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.